Yes, just two short questions. As we planned the student-based budgeting process, and we all value the local decision-making in terms of priorities, we never anticipated that some schools will be hit this hard. As we were planning this, were we basing it that money from Springfield, as well as pension relief, would have come? Was that part of our reality?
We believe student-based budgeting is a better way of distributing resources, whether you have a lot, a little, more, or less.
And I agree with that.
It is superior. So, we did not approach this and say, "Well, if Springfield comes in, this will be a good idea." We knew, in fact, we asked chiefs whether or not they felt that the schools would want to have the flexibility to know how to spend money if, in fact, we had to make a cut. And they said, "If resources are lower, I'd rather the principal get to decide how to use them than central office decide." So, that was the decision.
So, as we were discussing the autonomy that it brought, we said, "Our educational plan, we can have local decisions." My second question is, in the future, are we going to approve budgets earlier so that we can plan and know and focus on these strategies, whether it's expansion or cuts?
Absolutely. Our goal is to have the budget approved in the June board meeting before the start of the fiscal year. We've tried to do that each of the last three years. There was a leadership change in the district two years ago. A year ago, we had the contract negotiations, which made the budget very uncertain because there was so much that was unknown. And this year, we had the school actions. And not knowing whether or not those would be approved by the board and how that process would work delayed our budgeting process. We are hopeful that the fiscal 15 budget will be presented to you for approval in June 2014.
And I think we're looking forward to doing that earlier. Thank you.
Henry, do you have another question?
I don't have any further questions, David. I wanted to, in a way, just reemphasize what I heard from Tim. This is a budget which tries to deal with extreme fiscal imbalance, which has been around for a very long time. The pension is a big hunk of it, but it's not all of it. We have a structural deficit here that we take in less money than we spend. And the only way that you can deal with that is to either raise taxes, that means raising revenues, or cutting expenses, or borrowing. Now, borrowing doesn't solve any problems. These are pretty good environment, as Mr. Qualley pointed out, because interest rates are low, but we borrow on our capital budget, and then we have to pay for it. And when we pay for the borrowing, it hits our operating budget. So, a lot of what really we've been doing by using reserves is buying time. Buying time for people in Springfield to fix a set of problems, which come back and make running a large school district extremely difficult. Whether they will fix it, I don't know. They haven't fixed it yet. I'm not a prophet. But most of the fixing lies outside of our purview, beyond doing what we're doing, which is continuing to cut expenses in order to bring this budget into balance. When you cut expenses, and perhaps we should have said more about this to the beginning, you are cutting to the bone. You are affecting the classroom. You can't cut this much money out of this budget with extraneous things. The things that are being cut, whether it's support staff, teachers, programs, are really important things. I think we perhaps should say it more, but it is surely a fact. If Springfield decides, by the way, to offer another pension holiday, which I hope they won't do, I would be against it because it solves nothing. It just, again, postpones the problems that we have faced, problems which we got into in part because we had a pension holiday. We would have come to this earlier. That's the only difference. The final thing that I want to say, I want to emphasize it again because it's such an important part of what Mr. Qualley said, that most of what, or a big hunk, if not most, of the revenues which made life a little easier this year, certainly not easy, are timing revenues. They don't lead to more money. Getting revenues in in one month rather than another affects this budget. It leads to volatility in the budget, but it doesn't increase the revenues. That'll come back. If it hit us one month here, it'll come back on the negative side again. The state catching up doesn't give you more money. It just means they've paid you on time what they owed you, or if not on time, finally, what they owed you. Unless they legislate more revenues for this district, pick up more of the burdens, as they should, as he's pointed out, Illinois looks terrible on educational funding compared to almost all states. Illinois looks terrible in that its unemployment rate is high. Illinois looks terrible in that its pension shortfalls are worse than almost all states, if not all. I think actually worse even in California now. So that the problems that we face have been manufactured somewhere else, and now we have to deal with them. And you can talk about what Andy has called in the past "magical thinking," all you like, that somehow or other you can get a lot more money out of TIFs, somehow or other you can get a lot more money out of renegotiating debt, which is why I wanted Peter to speak to this, because these things simply are not true. You can stick your head in the sand. You cannot like the numbers. You can hoot and holler if that's what you want to do and claim it's all lies, but the fact is, it isn't lies. These are the problems, and you have to either live with it and fix them, or you're hoping something will turn up. And it's either going to turn up in Springfield, or frankly, it isn't going to turn up by fooling around and hoping that debt or manna from heaven is going to fall.
Thank you, Henry. If I might, I want everybody to understand, we are not voting on this budget today. This is the management's proposed budget to the board. There's a process that we will go through over the course of the next month, and I'm going to ask Tim or Barbara to lay out the schedule. And then after that process, and whatever is learned in that process, will be the final budget that we will vote on. Tim or Barbara, can you outline the process that we were going through that will engage the community in the presentation of a final budget?
Thank you for that. I had meant to add that at the end of my presentation. There will be three public hearings on the budget next week, the end of next week, that we will post on our website, and they will be publicized. They are next Thursday and Friday at 6:00 PM, so it's as easy as possible for community folks to attend. They are at Kennedy King College and Malcolm X, and I forget where the third one is. But we will have that information for you. In fact, I'll make sure we have it before this board meeting. We'll get that to you. So, I had meant to say that at the end of my presentation. I apologize for that. Following the public hearings, we will report to you on what we hear from the community and come back and let you know the issues that we're hearing about, and we can still propose changes to the budget prior to your voting on it at the August 24th board meeting. We are required to pass a budget by that board meeting because we are only, the latest we can go without a budget is August 31st. So, we'll have no choice but to approve it in that board meeting, but we are free to make revisions based on what we hear in the community meetings.
And Barbara, Tim, can you tell the public when you will actually release this proposed budget so that they can analyze it prior to those meetings?
All of these details will be posted online by the end of today. A very detailed website with budgets by school, by department, showing headcount, showing changes versus fiscal 13 in amazing detail. And that will be posted online before the end of today.
So, for all of those who might catch this on TV or elsewhere, the process will continue. The data will be available at the end of today for people to review and analyze. There'll be hearings for feedback, and we'll look forward to voting on a budget at the August board meeting. Thank you very, very much. Barbara?
Our action plan, the Next Generation Chicago's Children, is based upon a core belief that all of our children are capable of success and a core value that we hold, high expectations for every child. As such, we believe that reinvesting in our neighborhood schools is essential, not just five years from now, but for future generations of Chicagoans who will learn and grow in their classrooms. And in order for us to provide a coherent, systemic, district-led process to support high-need neighborhood schools, we've created the Office of Strategic School Support Services. You'll hear it referred to as OS4. The creation of this office represents a commitment to these core beliefs. We must offer our neighborhood schools every opportunity to succeed, and we must make the investments necessary to help them do so. The vision for OS4 is to ensure high-performing neighborhood schools for all students in every community. In addition to providing neighborhood schools with the targeted supports and resources they need, OS4 will be responsible for monitoring and overseeing the implementation of the School Improvement Grant Program. OS4 will work with school leaders, their staff, local school councils, to ensure a customized school support offered based on the unique needs and requirements of the individual school and community. These schools are a direct report to me via the chief responsible for OS4, Tracy Martin-Thompson. Ms. Martin-Thompson will now share with you the highlights and key components of our strategy to ensure that we do have high-performing neighborhood schools for every student. Ms. Martin-Thompson?
Thank you, Dr. Bird Bennett. Good afternoon, President Vitale, members of the board. This afternoon, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what is the Office of Strategic School Support Services, also known as OS4? Why was this office created? How we'll go about supporting schools that will receive services through our office? And then also talk to you a bit about how the first round of schools were selected to be a part of this initiative. Then I'd like to switch gears and give you a little bit of an overview of the work that we're doing as it relates to the implementation and monitoring the School Improvement Grant Program. As Dr. Bird Bennett stated, the Office of Strategic School Services was created to provide some of our highest-need schools the supports and services they need to help these schools to get back on track, to ensure that they are able to move forward with improving teaching and learning. Our office was created in response to concerns that, as a district, we do not have a systematic process in place for supporting our high-need schools. Historically, our primary intervention models have really centered around turnaround, where we go in and replace the principal, and remove the majority of the staff, school closure, or a restart model where we close the school and reopen it as a charter. But we do not have a support system in place to help these schools to get on the right track before such drastic actions become necessary. In addition, research shows us that taking such a piecemeal or a school-by-school approach to reform will not help the district yield notable district-wide improvements in student achievement, because this approach fails to acknowledge the larger school system's role in supporting and creating capacity for our highest-need schools. Most struggling schools do not possess the internal capacity to institute a comprehensive reform effort on their own. Issues such as high leadership and teacher turnover, a lack of a coherent instructional program, poor professional learning opportunities, and more contribute to these schools inability to meet and exceed performance expectations. As a result, the district has to take a more active and focused approach to providing these schools the type of support required to overcome such barriers and improve teaching and learning. Taking such an approach will not only provide the OS4 schools the assistance they need, but it will also serve as an organized model for how we, as a district, will go about supporting all of our high-need schools. Ultimately, the work of OS4 serves as a critical piece of the puzzle that will help us to achieve the district's vision, and that is essentially to assure that all of our students, no matter your zip code or the school choices within that zip code, are afforded access to high-quality learning opportunities that will prepare them for college, career, and life. Next slide, please. As to how we'll go about providing supports for these particular schools, there are a few key strategies that are a part and of aligned, comprehensive approach that we will employ. However, right now, I would just like to take a moment to really hone in on two of them, and that is the school diagnostic review process and professional development. First, I'm going to talk about the school diagnostic review process. In order to ensure we are able to develop and implement a plan of support based upon the identified needs of each school, OS4 schools will participate in what we call the school diagnostic review process. The process involves an examination of how the individual school's systems and structures work together to improve teaching and learning. This is a very important component of our work, because what we recognize is that the quantitative data only gives us one side of the story regarding what is really happening in an individual school. But we need a deeper understanding as to what the core issues are, where the strengths are for the individual building, in order to help us to develop an appropriate plan of action for the school. For example, what we recognize is that all Level III schools are not the same, all Level II schools are not the same. Their strengths and weaknesses are different. And so, we have to get a deeper understanding of what those strengths and weaknesses are so we can build upon the strengths, but also put an appropriate action plan in place to really help the school move forward to improve teaching and learning. As a part of the SDR process, or the school diagnostic review process, a team of reviewers consisting of district central office staff and members of the school community will participate in onsite school visits in which they will collect essential evidence through nonevaliative classroom visits, review of key documents, interviews with key stakeholders, et cetera, that will assist the district community in determining -- and also to provide real, concrete, meaningful recommendations for how to improve. This process will provide OS4 critical information that will help us to develop an appropriate prescribed plan of action for each school. It also serves as a valuable opportunity to engage the entire school community in a process of self-reflection and learning that will drive future continuous improvement efforts. I also want to note the fact that the school diagnostic review will start with the OS4 schools, but as we move forward, we will expand this process to include other district schools. Because, again, the data that we're able to gather through this process will be invaluable in helping us as a district to determine how we better support all of our schools as we move forward. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about the professional development model that OS4 will actually employ, because that's also a real critical part of our work. What is clear regarding the work associated with any school improvement or reform effort is that meaningful professional development aligned to the core instructional program is key. Whether the reform model focuses on turnaround, charter, implementation of a new program, the success of that model centers around the knowledge and skills of the individuals who are charged with engaging in this work. If the school staff members do not possess the internal capacity or the appropriate support required to successfully lead a school reform or improvement effort, the reform model will ultimately fail. That is why meaningful job-embedded professional development is a key lever for change. Most professional development opportunities consist of a series of disconnected workshops that do not effectively assist principals and teachers in developing the competencies required to improve student learning, nor the support required to effectively implement what they are learning. Through OS4, our principals, our instructional leadership teams, as well as teachers, will participate in a blended professional development model that will combine the benefits of monthly face-to-face and align virtual learning professional development sessions, as well as opportunities for collaborative practice, nonevaliative peer observations, research and reflection, and differentiated support through onsite and virtual instructional and leadership coaching support. In year one of our work, we will focus heavily on the implementation of the English Language Arts Common Core State Standards, balanced literacy instruction, preparing for the shifts towards PARC, and using data and assessment to improve teaching and learning. In addition, for principals, we will also focus on helping them to understand not only what this work should look like in practice, but also how to create the appropriate structures and systems that are necessary to support these efforts and improve teaching and learning. All elements of our work of this professional development program will be aligned to our new teacher and principal evaluation systems. I also want to note that it's also a part of our vision that by engaging these schools in such an intense level of professional development and support, eventually, OS4 schools will serve as model professional learning labs for other district schools. I also want to note that the professional learning resources and tools that we will create will not only benefit OS4 schools, but all district schools. That is why, as part of my work, I'm working very closely with my colleagues on the academic side to really develop these resources and tools to ensure alignment across the district and to also lay the foundation that will support a seamless transition for OS4 schools once they return to the traditional network setting. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about how the first round of schools were actually selected to be a part of OS4. As a part of the OS4 reinvestment school selection process, a number of factors were considered. First, we looked at the school's performance level. We looked at both Level II and Level III schools. We also took recommendations from the Office of Schools and the Network Chiefs, and then also looked at the location of the schools in relation to communities significantly impacted by school actions. All of these factors were considered in making determinations as to which schools would be included in the first cohort of OS4 reinvestment schools. I just would also like to note that this is just the beginning of the process for the school selection, but it will become more defined as we move forward with the implementation of our new performance policy and the school diagnostic review process. At this time, I'd like to just take a moment to bring up one of our principals who's here, who's been selected to be a part of OS4, Dr. Ronald Whitmore from Smith School. He is here to also say a few words in support of the OS4 initiative.
Good morning, President Vitale, board members, Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, and all of her leadership team. I am very excited to be here and just share a few thoughts about the OS4 reinvestment initiative. I recognize that the board often makes difficult decisions about schools and communities. However, out of those decisions also comes support. I walk into my school daily and see new air conditions being put in, new floors, whiteboards, and all the things that we need to make a viable option for Smith and our community school. With that said, it's an asset. It's an opportunity for us to have comprehensive support around professional development, teacher training for principals, teacher training, and support for local school councils around a comprehensive initiative. I just wanted to say thank you, and we're excited about the work that we're going to move forward and excited about OS4. Thank you very much.
Before I move into talking about the School Improvement Grant Program, I'd like to just stop and ask if there are any questions from the board related to OS4 reinvestment schools?
I do. Well, first of all, you know, as a former principal of a community school, I value this immensely, the level of support and the commitment for schools who need the support the most. But I have a few questions. Number one, are schools going to learn from one another? Because we have different models, and we have had very successful community schools. How are we going to connect them?
So, to answer that, first of all, in terms of bringing the schools together, schools will learn from each other. However, we're going to start with the OS4 cohort of schools first. What the hope is also is that, as a part of the professional development, some of the opportunities that teachers and principals will have is to actually go to some of our higher-performing schools also, to learn from them and build off of that work. But also, what we want to do is to learn from what's happening within the individual schools also. So, as a part of the PD, what will happen is that you'll learn certain concepts, but you also want to see what that work should look like in practice. I think one of the major problems that we have with professional development, the way it's designed and done right now, is that we present a lot of new concepts for teachers and principals, but they appear to be very abstract. We don't give them a concrete vision or understanding of what that work should look like in practice. And so, a huge part of our work is really helping principals and teachers to do just that.
Then the other part of my question had to do with the, how are these lead partners selected, and what's the engagement of parents and community in this school process with the teachers in the school?
Just a question for clarity, are we speaking about the School Improvement Grant, the lead partner providers with that?
Well, I saw in the report, whomever, the partners that are there, working with us, working with the neighborhood schools, how would they be selected?
So, there's two different groups of schools that OS4 works with. We have the reinvestment schools that do not have lead partner providers, but then we also have the SIG-funded schools, the school improvement grant-funded schools, that do have lead partner providers, and that is a requirement of the grant. The thought is, is that schools, again, do not have the internal capacity to do this work on their own. So, they need the support of an external provider to come in and help them with that work. And so, schools that received the School Improvement Grant funds went through a process in which school community members, the principal, members of the LSC, members of the school community, were able to come out and meet each of the lead partner providers that were selected through a rigorous RFP process. They were then able to select the lead partner provider that they felt best met their needs. And so, that's how we went about that process, with matching lead partner providers with schools that received School Improvement Grant funds.
Other questions?
Thank you.
First, I want to commend you on the fact that I see quite a few high schools involved in this program, because we know that that is definitely an area of need and one I'm really concerned about. I want to, I have a couple of questions and one piggybacks on what he was saying. In many cases, we bring in, or whether they selected, or we bring in outside contractors, but in most cases, it has been, my experience, that we don't utilize the schools that are already performing. We go outside when we have models of great schools in our system that are doing good things. So, I'd like to know, how will you incorporate them into your professional development so that they can work with their colleagues? That's number one. Then I'll go to two.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hines. So, let me just give you an example of the leadership professional development for our principals and show you how that work is going to align and connect. So, through the instructional rounds process, what we'll do is, some of the professional development sessions for our principals will be held actually at the higher-performing school sites, where we will actually engage in learning walks in the school to learn from, again, the schools that have met or are exceeding the expectations, and have an opportunity for principals to come together, and then also talk to the principal of that particular school. Then what we're going to do is go back to one of the school sites for the OS4 school group, and then also conduct instructional rounds there. So, what we'll begin to do is have conversations about what you've learned, what's happening in the higher-performing school, where your school is, and what we can learn from that, and what the next step should be as we move forward in the implementation of making the change.
Okay. The second question was, you mentioned that once they've, I guess you get them to the level that you would like them to be, they will return to their network. So, they are not a part of a network? This is a network unto themselves?
It's an office, yes. And so, we will take ownership of those particular schools, but we're working very, very closely with the Office of Schools. I work very closely with Ms. Little, and what we're doing is to make sure that the work we're doing is aligned across the board, because, again, we want to ensure that once those schools go back to the traditional network setting, that they have a successful transition, and they continue to succeed once they return.
Okay. So, they're not a part of one of our networks?
No, ma'am. They're not.
Okay. And the last question, and Barbara can answer this if she wants, since she's up there.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, that these schools, because of the request from the schools themselves and/or from elected officials, and because they are mostly in the schools that were most highly impacted by consolidations, we wanted to make sure that these resources are incredibly targeted, that the professional development is transferable, and that we do use the resources to, Carlos's question, of those schools that are already successful. We're not only talking about principal-sharing development in practice, but there are incredible practices of teachers in individual schools where that kind of cross-pollinization can happen. Lastly, the most difficult process in any venture like this, and I mean this is nationally, is the transference of those schools going back to a network. And we want to make sure that that work is sustainable, but it's also not abrupt. Sort of the conversations between the network leaders, between Denise and Tracy, is happening deeply. The other thing, just a point of clarification, I'm not sure if it's really clear, that the SIG process, the State Incentive Grant process, is not a district process, and those requirements by the state, in order for schools to even apply, require a partner provider. And the RFP -- And the RFP, and those providers that are ultimately approved by the state for our principals and our schools to select from, and then we did do something that I suppose looked similar to speed dating, you know, where they all kind of presented, and then the school was able, the school community, to select which partner provider they wanted to work with.
Okay, and the last question, yeah, I was aware of that, because I know that one of the principals, when they received all that money, asked for support, which I shared with you from the board, because while it was a lot of money, and they had partners, they weren't sure how to spend it. So I want to commend you again for stepping in, because we didn't help them, to my knowledge, last year, after they asked for support, several of them. And the last question I have for you was, because there are quite a few high school people, how many high school people, because you know this is a concern of mine, are on your team? Because I'm not visibly seeing, in my opinion, enough high school people down here to support the high schools.
Yeah, we're tapping the practicing high school people. We are reducing the number of positions that we have here at Central, so we are not going to be, I'm not looking forward to hiring, but clearly, working with those principals, who are high school principals already doing the practice, will be used as an extended arm.
Dr. Hines, we have a number of high school students with us today who are raising their hands volunteering.
Oh, they were volunteering to help, or what, I'm not sure. You know, hands can mean, I'm with you, I'm against you, or I'll help you. Which one? Not sure.
Okay, other questions? Do you have more?
Actually, the next part of that was for the School Improvement Grant. I see that Dr. Bird Bennett answered a lot of the --
So again, as Barbara, Dr. Bird Bennett noted, that each of the schools that receive SIG funds are required to work with a lead partner provider. Again, the thought is, is that these schools need the additional support in order to help them to improve. And essentially, the role of the lead partner provider is to go in, help to, help the school to assess their needs and the areas of focus, and help to develop and implement a comprehensive plan of support for the school to help it improve. And as we noted before, that we went through a very structured lead partner provider selection process, in which we went through a RFP process to, first of all, identify high-quality lead partner providers, brought the schools together to enable them to meet all the lead partner providers and make their selection. Of this year's 40 Tier One CPS SIG-eligible schools that were eligible to even apply for the grant this year, 11 of the schools applied. ISB awarded four grants statewide. Two are CPS schools, awardees, the new awardees, included Kelly and Bronsville. Moving forward for the next academic school year, we have 13 continuation schools, schools that are either going into the third-year implementation of the grant, which is the last year, including one of our charter schools, as well as five schools that are going into year-two implementation of the grant, and as I noted also, the two new SIG-funded schools. You also see the list of schools, the list of the current SIG-funded schools in your deck, as well as the new SIG-funded schools, Kelly and Bronsville, and the list of our reinvestment schools, the non-SIG-funded schools, which includes 21 elementary schools and one of our high schools. And in terms of next steps, the CEO, Dr. Bird Bennett, will be bringing together members of the school community of the reinvestment schools to talk more about what the OS4 office will offer and the work as we move forward. Any other questions regarding this SIG work?
Any other questions for Tracy?
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, President Vitale.
Important effort, and we wish you best.
Thank you.
Per the request of the board, I just would want to take this opportunity to share two pieces of information, actually, one piece of information. August 1st, Thursday, August 1st, at Truman College, 1145 West Wilson Avenue, starting at 6:00 is the hearing, budget hearing. August 1st, Thursday, August 1st, at Kennedy King College, 740 West 63rd Street. Again, the hearing's starting at 6:00. And then on Friday, August 2nd, Malcolm X College, 1900 West Van Buren, starting at 6:00. Timothy and the other folks here, Timothy, Tim Carley and others are going to have that posted on the website, so it'll be made available, and notice will go out appropriately. This ends my report, but I would like to say, Mr. President and members of the board, we have two policies on the agenda today, and I would like to ask if our general counsel, James Bebley, would provide an overview of those two policies which we're presenting to you. Mr. Bebley?
Thank you, Madam CEO. In brief, there are two policies. The first one is 13-0724-PO1, amend Board Report 08-0827, PO5 debt management policy. This policy is being amended to comply with the DOT-Frank protocol outlined for swap issuers. The district must certify that it does not rely on swap dealers for advice, and that advice has been, that it has written policies for the selection of independent advisors as it relates to swaps. Independent advisors must demonstrate that they have the appropriate knowledge to evaluate swap transactions, undertake a fiduciary duty to the district, be independent of swap dealers, make appropriate disclosures relative to conflicts of interest, and be in good standing with appropriate regulatory agencies. Staff recommends approval of this amendment to the debt policy. The second item is 13-0724-PO2, adopt the 2013-14 Student Code of Conduct. The Chief Executive Officer has directed a review of student discipline policies and practices. That review will take place in the coming year in partnership with community organizations, student organizations, parents, the Chicago Teachers Union, and the Chicago Principals and Administrators Association. In the meantime, the current policy is being proposed to be readopted, subject to certain administrative updates and clarifications. Staff recommends that that action go forward. Thank you, Madam CEO and Mr. President.
Thank you, James. Could that conclude your report, Barbara?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, that completes my report.
Okay. Before we move into public participation, just a couple of comments. Over the course of the last year and a half, we've tried to improve the operations and access to board members and these board meetings. I want to invite you all, again, to give us your ideas. As you know, we've changed the registration process to make it more efficient, so people don't stand in line, and we've provided office hours for board members that you can sign up for. If you have other ideas about how to improve board operations, we welcome them. If the demand is there, we're willing to consider increased office hours with board members, and if there is any way that people believe that we can improve the public participation process, we welcome your insights to that. I actually met with some students this morning, and one of the things that they recommended is that we get more engagement of students in our processes. As you know, we have an honorary student board member, and last year, we added what we called a shadow board member for each meeting, having that board member come, that shadow board member come from different parts of the city to participate in our board meetings, but we'll look for additional ways to include students in our process. Thank you for coming up with that idea this morning when we chatted. To the extent that you have feedback, call the board office at 773-553-1600, and let us know what you think we should do. Again, office hours are available, and you're welcome to call that number to schedule them.